I dropped my daughter off at school in the morning. The counter dropped her off at the Z.
Yep.
Sometimes I guess if you don't do it, sometimes it's easier.
That's why.
Maybe it's a little.
Doesn't have a window or senior commissions opening. No. You can stay in the 15.
Unless it's a duty holiday. So like this.
So when this company finally tells you, why do you wait? So he was like four days.
Good evening.
And then he got COVID and then he couldn't back. Right. I don't disagree with that. You have a three month window.
Because on my personal. If I don't file on 15, it's a $300 penalty. And I get 10% tariff. Whenever I do, 10% penalty. If I pay on time, if I don't pay on time, there's one penalty.
But it is a three month. To the person. November, December, January.
So you have to. Thank you.
Well, it's one of those things for me, like if I don't do it on the first.
Hey, how are you?
I'm Sue.
Yeah.
Zimmerman.
Yeah.
I have a check for you for the drama club.
Oh, no way.
Open at the.
Oh, fantastic.
Breakfast with Santa.
Okay.
Do you know, can I mail it? Is there a way to get ahold of you? Can you write? For who I should write the check out to so they can cash it?
Oh, okay. You can just. You can just write it out to the drama club. But I mean, really, it's just gonna go to Sean Holden at the high school. You can take it to the front office. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Cool.
They just are like, Sue, you need to give a check to them. Great.
How? Who? Where? Awesome. Thank you so much. It was fun. They had a lot of fun. So if you have another event like that.
Okay.
You can count on them. Yeah, it was good.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. I'll drop that off.
Get it right the first time.
We get them sometimes where they try to write a check to.
Jeff, can I request a point of personal privilege and sneak a plug for it from you? I don't get my own.
Yeah, you're more than welcome.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just. Okay, thank you.
I'll remember next week. How's that?
Oh, it's at that time a year ago?
We have a 1971.
Yes. It's got till March 15. It's been a peaceful.
Yeah, I know. I guess that's what I'm gonna be doing when I get home tonight.
The reason I did was they were demanding I find one. I didn't get free. We don't. We're doing it. I also plan to get the cop. Well, don't come, just do it. Well, I'm not doing it.
So.
So they got their annual. What they want. But since early I was right at 1980. Well, I think I have.
You guys are sneaking.
But I'm just saying.
Commerce.
Oh, yeah. See, I have. That's not good.
The other part of the story is he's very much like. Well, that's her ball. Her Brenda Bear. No, I'm not going to bring it. I had my shot at that. It did, and then they turned me down. Yeah, you have to get, and they have 70,000 tickets. I didn't. No, I had to have some sort of an artsy fartsy tenor theme to my approach. I just wanted to watch. Not like it had, not the same feel to be.
Good evening, K M X T. We are 60 seconds out from starting the meeting.
Yeah, like boy, turning man is to fix up those costumes of very skin.
Costumes?
Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting. We are in the Assembly Chambers. It is Thursday, January 19th, 2023. It's 6:30 PM. We'll start the evening tonight with the invocation from Major Dave Davis of the Salvation Army. Good evening, Major Dave.
Greetings on this dust-free evening of Kodiak. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we give you the praise and glory. We thank you for the privilege of freedom to gather here this evening. Father, we seek our fresh anointing upon our mayor, Assembly Members and Staff, and all those who are working behind the scenes to make our community strong. Gracious Father, I just ask a special blessing upon each person who is struggling through these winter months, other that they may be blessed with encouragement in their mind, their body, and their spirit. We thank you for your blessings. We pray these things in the sacred name of our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiak Alutic people, and we acknowledge the 10 tribes of the Kodiak Alutic region. We recognize the Alutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Mr. Art.
Here.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Liddoo.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Can we please get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, please say no. Next on our agenda tonight will be citizen comments. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. If you're here in the audience and you'd like to speak, please sign in and remember to turn on the microphone. If you'd like to call in, our local phone number is 907-486-3231, and our toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. If you'd please remember to state your name for the record before you begin to speak. That will help us. Please address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any individual member thereof. If you're calling in, please remember to turn off any listening device to prevent feedback. Good evening, Mr. Neff.
Hi there. My name is Court Neff. Hello, Assembly. I was listening in last Thursday. I heard the code enforcement officer bringing up the topic of addressing enforcement and whatnot. And I thought, I was very impressed. I called up the James yesterday and had a good talk with him. I was very impressed with the code enforcement officer we have, his attitude and community mind. And I'm impressed that he's been able to put up with having to run after people constantly onto their property and egg them about piles of trash. So I appreciate you guys. I think it's reasonable, all those options that he came up with. I just thought they were all very reasonable. I personally favor the arbitration option because I think the junkyard definition is a little overly broad right now. Way it stands right now, one vehicle that doesn't run on a property would be junk. A boat that doesn't have a motor would be junk. Somebody that has firewood that they go collect from a construction site scrap would be junk. Any pieces of metal, people that are welders or whatever, or boat owners, it's piece machinery that they've saved would all be classified as junk. It's basically, it hits most of us in Kodiak. We, you know, I've seen kids that rebuilt bikes for a hobby, people that bring home scrap wood for firewood, pallets, whatnot. Contractors that hang on to lumber piles for uses for friends and/or projects. People that have lots of equipment, anybody that has a small business. And they buy a new piece of equipment because one breaks, but they keep the old equipment because it's good for parts. You know, they can use it. We can't get parts here. One thing James brought up last, when he spoke, was the fact that we do live on an island. He understands that, and it is hard to get parts. We do have a unique situation. You know, a kid that wants, parents buy a car that needs some work for their high school kid so they can work on it and get a vehicle when they get older, you know, that would be in violation. Or two vehicles and they want to make parts out of, or somebody just keeping a parts vehicle. It just goes on and on. It's a little overly broad, the definition, the way it stands. And I really would encourage you guys to have a really good, long sit-down talk with the code enforcement officer, James. He has a real, I just was impressed that he has a really good understanding of where the community's at and what its real needs are and, you know, what's appropriate as far as that type of thing. And that's about all I got on that. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. Are there any phone calls tonight? Not seeing any other comments from the audience tonight. We will move forward. Are there any committee reports? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week I had the opportunity to attend the, for the first time, the Providence Community Advisory Council bimonthly meeting. Basically, in a nutshell, there was a review of the strategic plan, which I think Mr. Hertz worked on. Fabulous layout. If we're ever considering redoing ours, I would certainly look at that as a model for a layout that really made sense to me visually and content-wise. There were updates from, excuse me, various departments from within the hospital. And I think what struck me the most was the focus on, as a community, the need to start to focus on an aging population and what are the services that are available for, you know, many of our elders in our, in our community in the areas in which there's some lacking services. And one of the things that really stood out to me was individuals that are being cared for in their homes and by a family member, and the lack of respite-type services within the, within the island community to support those caregivers that may need to make a medical appointment for themselves or take care of some business that they just need to do and they need somebody that can help with their family member during those times. And those services are an area that, that our community struggles to provide on a, on a bigger scale. So I appreciated that dialogue and that conversation, and I think that's something that'll probably be ongoing. And I think there's a strong interest in looking at that facilities committee that we've talked about, and they're looking forward to getting started on that. That's all I have this evening with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, we had a consolidation committee meeting on Monday. We passed a resolution asking the borough to continue the committee, provided that we make another formal request to the city for cooperation and for financial support in regards to financial and kind of, and code merging expertise, and which we talked about at the joint work session last night, and I believe will be on consideration in the agenda at some point in the future.
Thank you. Any other committee reports tonight? I attended a Swampsea meeting today where we discussed the economic summit that Swampsea is planning. They do an annual summit this year. It's going to be March 2nd and 3rd in Anchorage. They also hired a new mayor culture manager, and that's one of our Kodiak locals, Nick Mangini. So congratulations to Nick. I think that is gonna be great for Kodiak. And it looks like that's all for committee reports tonight. The next thing we have on the agenda is a public hearing for ordinance number fiscal year 2023-02B of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough amending ordinance number fiscal year 2023-02, the fiscal year 2023 budget by amending budgets and appropriations to account for the additional school bond debt reimbursement payments received from the state of Alaska.
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2023 hyphen 02B. Second.
May we please have a staff report?
Well, basically, at this point, you have seen this several times. It is, version two is the version that was before you. As stated last week, the staff is fine with version two. The staff is also fine if there's a version three. Vehicles are in the process of being advertised for. I believe that's what the, the conversation is about. It can be handled this evening, or funds can be moved in the future at any time we have a, a budget adjustment, which we should have one coming up here very shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. At this time, we'll open our public hearing. If you'd like to call in about this issue, please dial 907-486-3231, or you can use our toll-free number 1-855-492-9202. If you're in the audience, please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking and address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If you're calling in, please remember to turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. And we'll wait just a minute or so to see if there's any phone calls. Not hearing or seeing any phone calls, we'll close the public hearing and start the assembly discussion. Are there any? Mr. Art?
Thank you. I was, I was happy to hear the staff agreed that there was 240,000 in the current year's budget for vehicle purchases. Now, that's, what I feel is that it's, it's enough to, to get us by for, for right now. And if we need some more, we then can do it. So what I'm gonna propose is to move the 560,000 from the listed as vehicles on here into fund balance. Because we don't need 560,000 plus 240,000 for vehicles. So the common sense approach to this is to move it into fund balance and decide where we, where and when we need it. Because it's probably gonna be in the next fiscal year anyway, in addition to it. We'll get, we'll get the existing vehicles that we're looking at. But yeah, we'll see what, we'll see what happens there. So if, so I, this time I'll go ahead and move to amend by moving the 560,000 from vehicle replacement capital account, basically, into general fund. So it'll increase the general fund amount by $560,000, which would be added to the $5,319,272.
Is there a second?
Second.
Assembly discussion on the amendment?
Question?
Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
No.
Mr. Smiley?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries with four yes, three nos.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? May we please have a roll call vote on the motion as amended?
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes with six yes, one no.
Next on the agenda is the Borough Manager's Report.
Yes, good evening and thank you. Quite an interesting day today. Met with both representatives from Providence in Anchorage, as well as with KCHC regarding facilities, existing facilities at our healthcare property, I'll call it that. Because there are several, two specific, or three specific, excuse me, entities or operations on that property, all of which are in need of repair. I think this is the appropriate time, our timing could not be better, to be setting up this facilities committee. The folks from Anchorage are willing to come down on our first meeting to have this conversation. We also have Corey Wall with Jensen Yarba Wall. Will be here on the second week of February. Will be doing a presentation for the Assembly regarding the Peterson School roof job, as well as we anticipate doing a conversation with you on the exterior of the KFRC facility. We're going to have several, multiple projects coming up in the next several weeks, as well as contracts. We are monitoring for the lacta funds. We have the, the guarantee that those funds are coming to us. They have not been deposited as of this particular time. The other highlight, I guess, for this evening for the public is we will be having the executive session to discuss the 717 Eganway lease proposal. So we'll be having that conversation later this evening. That negotiation has gone very well. Hope the Assembly is ready to look that over and hopefully send it on for approval next week, if all possible. The proposer is, been very cooperative and is in a position that they are ready to commit to a long-term lease for that property. So that's, I think, good for Kodiak in general. I provided all of you the popular report this evening, all three copies of that. Should you choose not to bring that home with you, please leave it on the desk and I'll collect it. But that report will be made available on the website for the public. We have a limited number of copies that were required to be printed, and you guys have most of them. So if for some reason, if you're gonna sleep on it or use it for the fireplace, give it to us. Maybe somebody from the public would actually want a physical, hard copy. So I'm not going to beat up what else is on this, on this report. If there's any questions from the Assembly. The only other thing I would point out is that the manager recruitment interviews are scheduled for January 31st and February 1st, per the request of the Assembly. And that's all I have for this evening, unless there's questions. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for Dave tonight? Scott?
Mr. Manager, wasn't there a source of funding that O'Kelly was talking about last night that would pertain to hospitals?
Yes, I actually had a conversation with Megan about that today. I think that we, if the Assembly chooses to assemble a federal CIP list prior to the deadline, which is coming up pretty quickly here, that would be the appropriate place to request funds. I need to nail down a price, and we need to talk about what it is we're gonna ask for.
I, I personally would be interested in having that federal CIP list go forward. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, can you talk more about the additional opioid settlement funds? How much are we looking at? What are the limitations? Where's, where is it coming from?
I don't know the exact amount. The attorney contacted us. We were going to put this on for an actionable item here sooner, actually, prior to this meeting. The attorney basically said, let the state of Alaska figure out what that dispersion is going to be, and they will release the information. At that point, we'll have a resolution for you to accept those funds. But it's just an additional amount of money that apparently the feds found, you know, money somewhere, and they're distributing it to all the appropriate municipalities.
Not seeing any more questions. That brings us into the messages from the Borough Mayor. I just wanted to send a thanks out to all that attended the joint work session last night. I think it's a good step in the right direction that we're continuing to work with the city, and we're going to plan on doing those meetings quarterly. I also wanted to let the public know that the summer schedule is out for comment for the Alaska Marine Highway System. If you do log into the Alaska Marine Highway System, they have broken their areas down to something that they're referring to as playbooks. So you just need to look for the Kodiak Area Playbook. And if you want to see ferry service to Old Harbor or something different, there is a comment block that you can just go on there and put that in. That's open for a few more weeks. So that's a great way to get your comments in. And I wanted to acknowledge all of the people, and there have been a lot, who have contacted me in regards to the Tanner Crab Fishery. So thank you for letting us know what's going on and keeping us up to date so that we're aware of the issues that you are facing. And with that, we will move on to, well, we get to skip all the way to other items. And we're gonna go to the confirmation of mayoral and assembly appointments to different boards, commissions, and committees.
Move to confirm the following appointments. First, mayoral appointment of Mr. Yasha Zabitnov to the Architecture Review, Engineering Review Board, Building Code Board of Appeal seat for a term to expire December 2025. Assembly appointment of Mr. Lee Robbins to the Board of Equalization seat for a term to expire December 2024. Appointment of Mr. Robert Tucker to the Board of Equalization seat for a term to expire December 2025. Mayoral appointment to, of Brian Himmelboom to the Parks and Rec Committee for a term to expire December 2025. Mayoral appointment of Mr. Kent Cross to the Planning and Zoning Commission City seat for a term to expire December 2025. Mayoral appointment of Ms. Teresa Pruitt to the Solid Waste Advisory Board seat for a term to expire December 2025. Mayoral appointment of Mr. Lawrence Van Dale to the Solid Waste Advisory Board seat for a term to expire December 2025. Second.
Is there any assembly discussion on any of those appointments? Not seeing any. May we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, seven zero.
Next, we have the Good Cause Determination for a Senior Citizen Exemption for Mr. Kyle Crowe. I would like to recess the regular meeting and convene a quasi-addictory hearing for the Good Cause Determination for Senior Citizen Exemption for Mr. Kyle Crowe. The appellant may call in by dialing 907-486-3231, or use our toll-free number 1-855-492-9202. to present his appeal and rebuttal. We will follow the procedure in KIBC 3.35.050, and the order of the presentation is as follows. The appellant will have five minutes. Ask the clerk, oh, sorry. We will ask the clerk to administer the oath if he calls in, and then we will, the assessor will have five minutes, and then both will have an opportunity for rebuttal of two minutes and two minutes.
You are now answering a call from the queue.
Assembly meeting, you're on the air. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, hi, it's Kyle. Just available, may lose you. Our phones have been off and on out here for the last three or four days.
Good evening, Mr. Crowe. Madam Clerk, will you please administer the oath?
Mr. Crowe, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, or answer to the question I'm about to state or ask. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, you have five minutes to present your side of the case, please.
Well, I've submitted a couple of emails, hoping that the Assembly members have read those to understand that I was led to believe that I was one day late in filing. I had COVID. I was in quarantine. My daughter, her husband, and my granddaughter then got COVID. The community was in lockdown. Wasn't able to email my application in. According to the assessor's office, it needed to be faxed. I was able to hand the application to the representative of the tribe and have that faxed in, I think it was the 18th or 19th, and received an email that it was one day late. This year, I was able to fax my applications in using our new Starlink Internet and computer or software on the computer that offers a free fax service.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Madam Assessor, you have five minutes to present your side of the case.
Per KIBC 3.35030D, the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly will need to determine whether the applicant, Kyle Crowe, has shown good cause for failure to timely file his senior application that received by the assessor's office on January 19th, 2022, one day after the deadline of January 18th. Any KIB senior or disabled vet may appear before the Assembly if the assessor denies the exemption for late filing if they wish for a good cause hearing. For the record, I will be reciting excerpts from Mr. Crowe's email. Assessing mail senior exemption and disabled veteran applications each year on or about November 15th. The application deadline is, is and always has been January 15th of each year. In 2022, the deadline date was January 18th. On January 19th, Mr. Crowe faxed his senior exemption application, which he admitted was one day late. In his email on December 14th, 2022, Mr. Crowe pointed out that per KIBC 3.35030G1, he did not receive a denied application letter. I mailed a letter to him on March 21st, 2022. In error, I mailed the letter to Kodiak instead of Port Lyons. Mr. Crowe asserts that he did not receive the letter. Assessing did not receive returned mail and was unaware that the letter had not been delivered. Mr. Crowe, in that email on page eight of your packet, paragraph four states, and I quote, "It appears to me that I have not been given due process to provide documentation to support my requests, such as a letter from my clinic with COVID test results or further explanation and information that might be useful," end quote. On December 14th, my reply email treated Mr. Crowe's email as a timely request for a good cause hearing. On December 16th, assessing mail the notification letter for today's hearing. On December 19th, 2022, Mr. Crowe emailed his letter for the hearing. On page two of your packet, in paragraph 11, it states, quote, "I determined that I had COVID after experiencing flu-like symptoms and using a home test kit," end quote. Earlier on page one of your packet, in paragraph one of the same letter, Mr. Crowe stated that he was late in filing due to contracting COVID, and quote, "being required to quarantine for 10 days," end quote. But continues to say, as he was ending his quarantine, he had close contact with others requiring an additional 10 days of quarantine. Mr. Crowe concludes in his email with, quote, "I ask that you please try to view my appeal from the perspective of that stressful time." Mr. Crowe also provided a copy as fax transmission verification showing the fax was sent at 3:49 PM on January 19th. The application shows that Mr. Crowe signed the application on November 21st, 2021. This application also shows that Mr. Crowe did not check the box that his property is occupied by other people. Mr. Crowe, like all other citizens in Kodiak, had the notice mailed to him on November 15th, 2021. Every citizen that received an application from us had 64 days to file that application. The application Mr. Crowe provided shows that he had the application in his hand on November 21st, 2021, 58 days before the deadline to file. Additionally, Mr. Crowe received notice of his tax due on his property in July, showing that he did not receive his exemption. Mr. Crowe waited until after the delinquent notice in November to file his good cause appeal when delinquent charges were added. I would ask the Assembly to deny Mr. Crowe's request for timely application for the exemption for 2022 by finding that he has not proven good cause. Mr. Crowe did not provide evidence of doctor's care or any type of proof of illness. Perspective of a stressful time is not included in a good cause definition. It is not for the Borough to grant an exemption because Mr. Crowe waited until the 11th hour to send it, and then he got sick. His own application is proof of ample time for filing. Thank you.
Thank you. There now is a two-minute time for rebuttal for the appellant, Mr. Crowe.
Well, I would like to just correct the record that my daughter, husband, and granddaughter were not living with it. Anyway, I defer to the Borough for their decision.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Any final rebuttal?
The bottom line, no matter what is said tonight, Mr. Crowe did not apply on time. He did not provide good cause as defined in KIBC 3.35030D2. The Borough cannot be responsible for a late filing when it is clear Mr. Crowe had 58 days to file from the date he signed it. I handed out two additional pages to you and emailed them to Mr. Crowe today. AS 2945030 required exemption states, "An exemption may not be granted under E of this section except upon written application for the exemption. Each municipality shall by ordinance establish procedures and deadlines for filing the application." KIB established procedures and deadlines in KIBC 3.35030E1, strict enforcement of deadlines to file an exemption application and annual certification. This Assembly has held many others accountable to that deadline for 2022. The definition of deadline is "the latest time or date for which something can be or should be completed." The assessor's office did not have an application in hand on January 18th, 2022. KIBC 3.35030D2 defines good cause in part by stating "a serious condition or event which could be a reason to grant this request." However, Mr. Crowe himself proved that he was not substantially impaired to file a timely application by the date that he signed it. KIBC 3.35030 also states that good cause shall not mean late filing due to the applicant's inadvertence or oversight. If Mr. Crowe was required to quarantine for 20 days, as he states, why did he not file in the other 30 days that the application was in his hands? Over 600 other applicants, many of whom who live in remote villages, timely filed during 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a recommended motion?
Move to uphold the assessor's decision for lack of good cause shown as stated in Kodiak Island Borough Code 3.35.030D for Kyle Crowe of the property located at 430 Main Street, Port Lyons, Alaska, 99550.
Second.
Is there any assembly discussion? At this time, and you're able to ask questions from either the assessor or the appellant, if you have any? Not seeing any questions. I will call for a roll call vote on the motion, reminding you that a yes vote will deny the application.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, seven zero.
According to Appellate Rule 602, the appellate or the assessor has the right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of Alaska from our final decision. Should you wish to exercise your right of appeal, you must do so by notifying the Borough Attorney and initiating the process within 30 days from the date of our written decision. Failure to do so will forever bar you from any appeal of the decision. And with that, I will adjourn the quasi- I struggle with that word- adjudicatory, thank you, hearing, and reconvene the regular meeting. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. And citizens' comments again. The phone number, if you'd like to offer citizen comment, is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. If you're in the audience, please step up to the podium and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. If you're calling in, please remember to turn off your listening device to prevent feedback and address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. Mr. Neff?
Hi there. I was wondering about the landfill as far as, I believe, from what I was told, there was instituted salvage restrictions because of COVID originally, and that they're still in place. I'm not sure about that, but I, from what I'm aware, the manager might be able to verify that. But I think we're still not allowed to, the public isn't allowed to salvage from landfill still. And personally, I hate to see waste. I love junk getting it. Anyways, I've literally found a whole deck's worth of wood there, and given it away, said I can't see it thrown away, thrown it in my truck, and taken it, and ended up giving it to a friend that ended up building a deck out of it. I've used material, found so many materials that I've been able to use in the past there. I would love to see that be utilized as the public being able to utilize that again. I think it would help to not have so much junk in the landfill. I think it would, you know, that's a big expense in our borough is the landfill filling up. I mean, it used to be they'd pile up wood, huge pile, and they'd burn it. And I guess somebody complained because some asphalt or something got mixed in, and so some bad smoke got, so they had to eliminate it. But it was great before. I mean, we're just, every day, they're just squashing buildings, basically, in there. It's like, it just makes me really sick. I mean, that whole AC building probably went in there, for an example, and just, I mean, is that a good use of our landfill? If there's some way we could figure that out, be able to make better use of that, or at least open up the minimal amount that we had before to salvage again now that COVID's gone, and possibly even look at broadening the opportunities there. Before, we had to sign a release of liability. Seems like that should cover it still. I mean, as far as liability, as long as somebody signs a piece of paper saying, "I will not hold them responsible for a pile of junk falling on my head." If it does, it's your fault for being in there, you know, that sort of thing. I think that would be really a good step. I think it would be helpful personally. And I like doing it. I like getting stuff there. I'm a gardener. I like to go get some web to build fences out of. I've used, I've needed some scrap lumber at times. Gone there, it's just right, it's close to my neighborhood. So anyway, those are my personal things. I know it's up to you guys, your opinion on that, but hopefully you agree. And good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neff. Are there any phone calls? All right, we will move on to Assembly member comments. Mr. Smiley, anything tonight?
I've grown concerned about the rocket launch on the island. We no longer have NASA involved in launches. We no longer have US military involved in launches. And now, we have tons of rocket fuel spread out over part of the island, which disturbs me. I'm not sure what the right solution to this is. We seem to have lost close contact with the rocket launch. They are not as forthcoming as they used to be, at least in my imagination. And I think we need to do something about this and do it quickly before we get another 5,900 pounds of rocket fuel, whether it's hydrozene or kerosene or whatever it is, being spread across the island and across our waters, which have fish in them.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Mr. Liddoo?
No comments.
Mr. Art?
No further comments, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Just a couple of things. I appreciated the joint work session last night. There wasn't really an opportunity for member comments at the end, which is totally fine. But I just wanted to say something to those of you who serve on, to serve on our boards and advisory boards and commissions and work groups. There were some intimations last night from some other members, not on this dais, that there's some kind of expectation of expertise in a work group or a committee. And I think even at one point, it was mentioned that you can join this particular work group, but don't ask any questions or you will look dumb, at least for a few months. And that didn't sit right with me because we are, we are a government of citizens and residents. And after working with the Consolidation Committee for the past four to five years, there's a lot of non-experts who have a lot of interest and a lot of love for this community. And I just don't want those, if you happen to hear those comments last night at the joint work session, I don't want that to prevent you from signing up for a committee or putting your application in. We all started off as non-experts at one point. We were all greenhorns. I'm still a greenhorn. And so, please join committees and work groups, and please ask questions. Those are important. The second thing is I will not be here next Thursday. I am taking the Kodiak High School Drama Debate and Forensics Team to Juneau. We're starting our fourth campaign to defend our state's title. And we're going to take them on tour of the legislature. I just want to thank everybody for their financial support for this group of future lawyers and public speakers and presenters.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Delgado?
No comments.
Mr. Turner?
No comment tonight, thank you.